Good evening. It is now seven o'clock and the Beller Board of Town Commissioners Town Hall meeting is now in session. I'm going to call the roll first, Commissioner Chismar.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
And Commissioner Chance.
Here.
All right. If you will all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you and welcome. Our first item of business is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve this evening's agenda of November seventeenth, 2025, here at the Town Hall. Thank you, Commissioner Chance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion of the agenda this evening? All right. In that case, Mr. Krantz, we're ready for the vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the approval of this evening's agenda, November seventeenth, 2025. Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meetings held on October twenty-eighth, 2025, and November third, 2025, be approved as submitted.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Chismar, is there an amendment?
Yes, there is. Madam Chair, I'd like to amend item number one in the October twenty-eighth work session meeting. I'd like to amend the title from called order to beginning of meeting as there was no called orders. We did not have a quorum at that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Chismar, any discussion? All right, Mr. Krantz, we're going to vote on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To vote on the amendment of the October twenty-eighth work session meeting minutes, Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Those minutes are amended.
And now we are going to vote on the meeting minutes as amended.
You already made one.
We moved, yes.
This is to vote on the meeting minutes as amended for the work session on the twenty-eighth, as well as the Town Hall meeting on November thirtieth. Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Chance?
Aye.
And Chair Edding?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to have the address, the parting address, from the outgoing commissioners, but first, we would certainly like to thank Commissioner Chance for her outstanding service to the board. Her life has truly been one of service, beginning with her work for the county and community services, and later as the Director of Administration. She went on to serve four years on the Board of Town Commissioners and has also contributed her time and talents to the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation. And all the while, Commissioner Chance has also been a devoted mother and grandmother, two callings with which this board simply cannot compete. I'm certain she will continue to serve the Bel Air that she loves so much, but now she will have more time to dedicate to her family, and we certainly cannot begrudge her that. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we have a proclamation for you. You'll meet me at the podium?
Sure.
So our certificate of recognition to Mary F. Chance. Whereas Mary Chance has served as a member of the Beller Board of Town Commissioners since being elected in 2021, and whereas during her four-year term, Commissioner Chance demonstrated a commitment to community service and ensuring that the town of Bel Air continues to be a great place to live, work, and play, she's been a strong advocate in quality of life matters such as improving pedestrian and traffic safety, and whereas Commissioner Chance has been a Board of Town Commissioner liaison to volunteer boards, commissions, and committees such as the Cultural Arts Commission, and the Committee for Seniors and Citizens in Need, plus she's been a leader in civic organizations such as the Greater Bel Air Community Foundation. And whereas Commissioner Chance is concluding her latest chapter in a long career of serving in local government, having previously worked as the Director of Community Services and the Director of Administration for Harford County, now therefore the Beller Board of Town Commissioners hereby recognizes and thanks Commissioner Mary Chance for her service to the town of Bel Air as an elected official, and wishes her all the best in her future endeavors. Mary, thank you so much for your service.
This evening is the next chapter, opening the next chapter of my life, and I have to say that serving as a commissioner has been a true honor, and it's been a good four years, but I am truly looking forward to being Grandma's taxi service full-time. And, but what I want to say to all of you and people who might be listening on our website, that the town is the town of people who care about what's going on. And there are so many boards and commissions within town government that if you want to be involved in some way, shape, or form, whether it's in Parks and Recreation, or arts, beautification, any, to go online and look at those opportunities and be willing to say, yeah, I'd like to be part of this. I'd like to have the opportunity to serve, because my favorite saying of all time is, "Service is the rent you pay for the space you occupy." I believe that sincerely. We're here. We can soak up all the great stuff, but service makes it even better. And a perfect example of that right now is Winter Wonderland. It doesn't happen unless people are willing to spend the time putting those decorations up and then taking them down later. So I really encourage people to say, yeah, I've got some time. I could do that, or whatever, but go to our website and look at the different boards and commissions and think, yeah, maybe there is a place for me. So please think of that. Now I want to say thank you to all the staff. Chief, keep up the good work. Thank you so much for what you do. Stephen Klein, I put in a lot of phone calls to Stephen and say, hey, could you check on this? Will you do this? It's amazing what your group does. I so appreciate them. I love seeing the guys come by and pick up the garbage and take my neighbor's garbage can to her door because she's an elderly woman. Where in the heck does that happen, except in Bel Air? So thank you. Thank you. Angela, you are an amazing, amazing lady. You've got a big job to do, and you do it extremely well with the tiny little staff that you have. Hinted. But it's, you're doing a great job, and I love serving on your committee. Really, I have. So I'll miss you. I will. But I'm going to come and visit, too, so. Lisa, how in the world you do your job is way above my level, for sure. How you do what you do is amazing to me. She manages the finances. There's no way in the world I would ever want your job. So thank you so much for what you do. Kevin, wow. You've got lots of people wanting lots of things from you all the time, and I know that. And trying to balance what this group wants and what this group doesn't want is a big job, but I appreciate all the work you've done over the last four years that I've been here, and it's, I'm very, very proud to say, friend, thank you. Thank you. Liz, amazing hard work, trying to help us figure out what we can and can't do. And I think you've done a wonderful job, and I really appreciate your time, very much so. And these two characters over here that I sat next to these last four years. Michael, thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you've done. You, every day, are here doing a million different jobs, I know. The last one that just happened was voting and trying to get that coordinated and have it move simply wonderfully. Congratulations. Job well done, every day. Thank you. And then there's this lady on the end over here, Jane. There is no way in the world I would want her job, ever. She's typing away, and she gets it all, and I'm like, I have to go back and look at the minutes because I'm not sure I remember what all happened. So thank you, Jane. Job, job well done. And this young man who's going to take my chair, thank you. I'm glad everything has gone well for you, and we're looking forward to seeing you do great things with this board. Eddie Hopkins, you're the man. I so appreciate all the hard work you do every single day and night. Eddie's one of those people, like I was saying, he understands service. He's in the fire company. I don't know how in the heck you do that. So thank you. I really, really appreciate your hard work. I do, indeed. And to the board, you've got a lot of work ahead of you, but I know you'll handle it well, and you've got a new team player. That's great. We still have another team player that has yet to come. So good luck to all of you. I don't always wear black to these meetings, and it doesn't mean anything about this meeting, but I'm going to quickly leave because my son-in-law, his mother passed away, and she, they are holding her service now. So I'm going to leave and go to that. But it has been a wonderful honor. I appreciate everything, all the people that come to the meetings, all the people who watch online, and I really can't say enough about the staff. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
We do have one more person who has a few words to say upon occasion of your departure, and that would be Delegate Susan McComas, who's here.
I'm very sorry for your family's loss. It seems like all the good people are going upstairs, and so the rest of us that remain must mean we're not as good people. Anyway, I just wanted to say to you that local government, municipal government, is where the rubber meets the road, and it's so important. And I think that unfortunately, the environment I'm in, they don't really appreciate local government, and that's continuing and is getting worse and worse. So with that, I'll cut the political speech and say, I hope you enjoyed your tour of duty, and I know that you're, they really haven't lost a commissioner. They've just, they still have a community activist, so that's a good thing. So congratulations.
Thank you, Susan.
And this is a Maryland flag and a little note.
Oh, thank you.
So you take care.
Thank you.
Here we are. All right, I'm going to get out of here so we can get down to work. Hope you don't mind. Gather up my goodies. I'm sorry I have to leave, but I have to leave.
Michael, are we going to send Commissioner Chance's nameplate home with her?
Oh, yeah. Because there's a handsome man who's going to take that seat. Take care, y'all.
All right. As Mary departs as Commissioner for the last time, I'm going to call on Michelle Karzuski, the Clerk of the Circuit Court for Harford County, to conduct the swearing-in ceremony. You can have the podium if you'd like.
We're going to have each of the candidates do one at a time?
One at a time, it's good with me.
Do one at a time?
Or you can do both at a time, your choice.
No, we'll do one at a time. Give everybody their minute.
Okay, give everybody their minute. I'm ready.
Just one minute. Okay, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Paula Edding.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Be faithful?
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently?
Diligently.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Without partiality?
Without partiality.
Or prejudice?
Or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of Commissioner of Bel Air?
Of Commissioner of Bel Air.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state?
And laws of the state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
Of the town of Bel Air?
Of the town of Bel Air.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All righty. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
All righty, we're going to get started. I'm going to have you raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Gavin Hanley.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will support?
That I will support.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will?
And that I will.
Be faithful?
Be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently?
Diligently.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Without partiality?
Without partiality.
Or prejudice?
Or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of Commissioner of Bel Air?
Of Commissioner of Bel Air.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state?
And laws of the state.
And the Charter of the town of Bel Air?
And the Charter of the town of Bel Air.
Congratulations.
You are very welcome. So thank you very much to the Clerk of the Court for coming over here and taking care of that. Thank you. All right. Now that the new board has been seated and sworn, it is time for the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. Town Council?
Good evening, members of the board. As Town Council for the town of Bel Air and Chair Pro Tem, at this time, I would like to call on the Board of Town Commissioners for nominations to the position of Chair of the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners. May I have a nomination?
It is my honor to nominate for a third term Mayor Paula S. Edding as Chair of the Board of Town Commissioners.
Any further nominations? May I have a second?
Second.
Any Commissioners' comments?
Paula has done a wonderful job as mayor, and I look forward to the next year of her leadership of both this board and the town. It's a privilege to nominate her, and it's a real privilege to serve with her. I'm glad she's been returned for another four years, and I'm glad we get another year with her at the helm.
Any other Commissioners' comments? At this time, I'd like to call for a vote. Commissioner Hanley?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Liz.
Aye.
Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Commissioner Edding?
Aye.
The ayes will have it.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I just have to sincerely thank the voters for electing me to a second term on the town board, and thank you to my fellow commissioners for the opportunity to once again serve as Chair. I deeply appreciate the confidence you've placed in me, and I'll continue to do my very best to represent the town in all that I do. With that being said, we are now moving on to the election of the Vice Chair. Do I have a motion for a nominee for Vice Chair?
I move to nominate Steve Chismar as Vice Chair of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanley. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Are there any further nominations for Vice Chair? Any discussion for Vice Chair? All right. In that case, we're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the position of Vice Chair. Commissioner Hanley?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner Edding?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chismar?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Chismar, any words that you would like to say?
No, I'd just like to thank the board for their confidence in re-electing me as a Vice Chair. I know it's tough, tough shoes to follow when Paula's not here, or whatever, but I appreciate your confidence, and I look forward to serving the community.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have the presentations for the Municipal Citizens Academy graduation.
So, Madam Chair, I'll ask you to join me in just a second, but it's my privilege tonight to present the second class, graduating class of the Maryland, of the Town of Bel Air Municipal Citizens Academy. A little history for people who may not be familiar with the program. This was an idea born out of the concept that we have multiple levels of government, which we understand. They all rate, they all really do operate generally with the same purpose in mind, but each one operates a little differently in terms of rules, regulations, procedures, and so forth. As Delegate McComas so aptly stated, municipal government really is where rubber meets the road. It's where we work the closely, closest with our constituents. As a result, it's important to have good, effective communications, to have good collaborative partnerships. It's good to work with people who have an understanding, a clear understanding of how government functions, how it works. So with that in mind, staff and I created a concept of an academy where we could invite citizens of the town of Bel Air to come and participate in a volunteer class to learn more about how the town of Bel Air's government operates, have an opportunity to develop partnerships, not only with me, but of our elected officials who presented, yourself and Commissioner Taylor, along with all of my staff members as well. So to that end, while the first session was last spring, this was the second session. One of the differences about this session is that we extended our invitation for participants, not only to the citizens of Bel Air, town residents, but also to leaders in our nonprofit groups, because we work very closely with Downtown Alliance, Alliance Club, the Rotarians, and a number of other nonprofit groups that are very keen and instrumental in helping us accomplish our mission. So to that end, we did invite members of those organizations to participate. You and I being parents of scouts, one additional invitation we offered this year was for scouting representatives to attend the class, to obtain points for their merit badges, mostly in community and citizenship. And we did have one scout participate in that, so that person was able to achieve their merit, their merit badge for that particular category by attending two of our classes. We needed to be respectful for the young man because he was in school, and we couldn't take him away every day for eight weeks, but we did get him away for two sessions. So the sessions are eight weeks long. They run for two and a half hours each night, one night a week. And tonight, again, I am proud to offer to the Commissioners our second graduating class in Municipal Citizens Academy. We have several other class members in attendance tonight. I did get a call late this afternoon that one of the class members was taken ill and was unable to attend. So, but I will ask you to join, Madam Chair, if you would. I'll have you present any remarks and the certificates. Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you to everyone who took their time out of their busy lives to come and attend the academy. It certainly is a valuable, informative session where you can really learn what goes on and what all the different departments are in the town. I think it's a terrific thing for you to spend your time, and certainly if any of you have an interest in serving on any of our committees, please, you know, take a look at what is available online, and we'd be happy to have you serve. Some of the committees require you to be a town resident, but many of them do not. So thank you so much again for having participated in the Municipal Citizens Academy, and without further ado, I think we should present our graduation certificates. First, to David Guzewich. And I know Dave does so much for the town because he is with the Lions Club, and next we have the certificate of graduation for his wife, Sandra Guzewich. Another Lions Club member. Thank you so much. I hope you learned a lot about how the town runs. All right. Next, we have Mitchell Lindsay.
Mitchell's actually ill.
He's the one that's ill. I hope he feels better. David Patzer. Congratulations, and thank you so much. Joshua Rossler. Congratulations. Alyssa Wallace. Thank you, Alyssa. Alyssa is the owner of a lovely historic property in Bel Air, and got the early word on the historic preservation piece of legislation she was interested in. And last, we have Eric Wong. Congratulations, and thank you so much for attending. Group photo.
Group photo, yes, ma'am.
All right. Let's get the other Commissioners down for the first group photo for Commissioner Let's get the other Commissioners down for the first group photo for Commissioner Hanley. But not the last.
First of many.
First of many.
You're gonna have to scooch in. Steve, you wanna stand in the back? You want me to stand in the back?
Yes, Steve, you can stand in the back.
Sorry.
There will be cake shortly. So stick around for the cake. All right. Under new business on our agenda, we have policy IE six, signing of the checks amendment. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the amended operations administration finance policy IE six, authorizing the withdrawal of town funds on deposit with any commercial banking institution within the state of Maryland be approved by the Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Chismar. Do I have a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion of the policy? Oh wait, I'm sorry, Lisa. Ms. Moody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is basically just a housekeeping change with our existing policy. I know it talks about any banking within the state of Maryland, but it is really with our operating account, which has check signing privileges on it. So we're just removing our outgoing Commissioners and adding our new Commissioner to the list. I'll have signature cards, which they're gonna do electronically, once we have your email set up, Commissioner Hanley. So, again, just a housekeeping issue.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Moody? Housekeeping matter. Is there any member of the public here that wishes to comment on this piece of business only? All right, in that case, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for the vote to approve the amendments to finance policy IE six. Commissioner Chismar.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanley.
Aye.
And Chair Edding.
Aye.
The policy is approved, thank you.
All right. Next, we have the appointment to the Cultural Arts Commission. May I have a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the appointment of Marisa O. Canino to the Bel Air Cultural Arts Commission for a term of three years, effective immediately, be approved by the Bel Air Board of Town Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And, Mr. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do, as staff, recommend Marisa Canino for appointment to the Cultural Arts Commission. She comes with a very strong background in the arts, not only arts administration, through her involvement with the Hartford Artists Association, but also as a visual artist herself. She also has grants writing experience and arts administration experience that we feel will be a valuable contribution to the Cultural Arts Commission.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions regarding this appointment? All right, Mr. Krantz?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the appointment of Marisa Canino to the Cultural Arts Commission. Commissioner Chismar.
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanley.
Aye.
And Chair Edding.
Aye.
Welcome, Marisa.
All right. Next, we have public announcements. All Town of Bel Air offices will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, for Thanksgiving Day, and Friday, November 28th, for the day after Thanksgiving. The Historical Society of Harford County is holding its annual green sale starting Friday, November 21st. That is the deadline to submit your order for an advent wreath at a cost of $45 each. They can be picked up at the Historical Society headquarters in Bel Air between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, November 25th. Orders for boxwood trees and centerpieces with one or two candles should be placed by December the 4th. Call 410-838-7691, or visit harfordhistory.org for more information. Orders can be placed online via the Historical Society website. The Bel Air Lions Christmas Tree Sales begin Saturday, November 22nd at noon. Fresh Fraser firs, ranging in height from four feet to nine feet, will be available in the tree lot at Bolton Street and Route 24, across from Harford Mall. On Saturday, the lot will be open through 9:00 p.m. Regular hours start Sunday, November 23rd. The lot will be open 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, and from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays during the holiday season. The lot will be closed on Thanksgiving Day. Get your picture taken with Santa Claus between 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. on Sunday, November 30th. The annual Christmas Tree Sale is the Lions' biggest annual fundraiser. Visit belairlions.org, or follow the Bel Air Lions Club on social media for more information. Reminder that the deadline to sign up to participate in the Bel Air Christmas Parade is Monday, November 24th. Visit the Christmas Parade page on the Town website, belairmd.org, for an application form. The parade will be Sunday, December 7th, starting at 3:30 p.m. on Main Street. Following the parade, head over to Shamrock Park for holiday music, a bonfire, and the ceremonial lighting of the Town's Christmas tree. Enjoy free parking at all metered spaces on the street in the Town of Bel Air starting Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 27th. The free parking will be available through the day after Christmas, Friday, December 26th. So come on out and shop, dine, and be merry this holiday season. The Christmas Train Garden opens Friday, November 28th, in the Mount Arat Masonic Lodge at 136 East Gordon Street. The Train Garden will be open from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. that day. Visit christmasinbelair.com, the official site for all holiday activities in Bel Air, for a full schedule. Admission is free. Opening night for Winter Wonderland in Bel Air is Saturday, November 29th, in downtown Bel Air from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Enjoy lake displays, visits with Santa Claus, strolling fairy tale princesses, and horse-drawn carriage rides. And stop in the shops and restaurants while you're downtown. Visit christmasinbelair.com, or follow Winter Wonderland in Bel Air on social media for more information. The Bel Air Holiday Market, hosted by the Bel Air Downtown Alliance, will be Saturday, November 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon in the parking lot at 121 South Main Street, next to Dasper Hall. Enjoy a holiday-themed open-air market where you can purchase the perfect holiday gift from a local artisan vendor. The market will be open each Saturday through December 20th. Visit downtownbelair.com, or follow the Downtown Alliance on social media for more information. Come out to support downtown Bel Air businesses on Saturday, November 29th, for Small Business Saturday. With such a diverse array of shops, you should be able to find just what you need to cover your holiday shopping list. Visit the Small Business Saturday page on Bel Air Downtown Alliance website for more on downtown shopping opportunities. Support local artists in Bel Air during Artist Sunday on Sunday, November 30th. Artist Sunday is a nationwide initiative to promote purchasing works made by artists in your community. Stop by the Hartford Artists Association Gallery and Armory Marketplace, or other businesses in Bel Air where the work of local artists and crafters are sold throughout the day. The Cultural Arts Commission will meet at 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 19th, in the Bel Air Armory Conference Room. The Committee for Seniors and Citizens in Need will meet at 8:30 a.m. on Monday, December 1st, in the Bel Air Police Department Community Room. And the Board of Town Commissioners will hold a work session at 5:15 p.m. on Tuesday, November 25th, in the Bel Air Town Hall, and the next Town Meeting will be at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, December 1st, in Town Hall. Did I miss anything? That's a long list because Christmas is coming. All right. We now have an opportunity for public comment, where members of the public can comment on anything, whether it was on our agenda this evening or not. And I know I see Mr. John Stump here, who had signed up. Where did he go?
I think he left.
I think he left, okay. Well, he had signed up online, but since he is not here, Ms. Janelle Mooney has signed up as well to speak. So the podium is yours for three minutes. If you're representing an individual, and five if you're representing a group. And you need to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Janelle Mooney. I am representing myself. My, what was it?
Address.
1622 Rebecca Court, Forest Hill, Maryland. Sorry. 21050, and that's apartment A. So, as a local renter, I was excited to see the new apartment, standard on bond, going up in downtown Bel Air. And I know the Town Commission looks at the exterior aesthetics of the building because it is important for new buildings to fit within the identity of Bel Air. However, perhaps you could consider looking at the interior of buildings as well. Upon looking at the floor plans provided on their website, I saw that four out of the six layouts have a bedroom with no exterior window. I was confused that they could even call these apartments luxury. Most people might gloss over this or not notice until they're living in such a space. So consider this visual. Imagine you are in one of the rooms in your home that doesn't have a window. Typically, this would be a bathroom or a closet. Imagine turning out the lights and going to sleep and waking up in the morning. When you wake up, it is just as pitch black as when you went to sleep. You're disoriented, you don't know what time of day it is, and you don't even have the option of opening blackout curtains to look outside. Generally, not having a window in a bedroom would be illegal. I'm guessing that they had to jump through three different technicalities within the International Building Code to make this legal. Now, I'm not familiar with the local building codes, and maybe this is something you can consider adding to your local building codes, but we must ask ourselves, of the quality of life in which we would want to live, and as a Town, provide. I see Bel Air as a proud town in which quality of life is a part of its identity. And this building, as it stands, is an affront to those values. It is not too late to consider pausing progress on the construction and requesting an interior redesign for this building in order to have windows in each of the bedrooms. And at the least, for the future, please consider requiring, please consider looking at the inside of the buildings and requiring bedroom windows as part of your building codes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else here this evening who wishes to make a public comment? All right. In that case, we're on to Commissioners' comments.
I would like to welcome my friend and new seatmate Gavin Hanley to the Board. I take heart in the fact that while I am still the youngest person up here, the gap has been narrowed significantly. So, you're gonna do a lot of great things, Gavin. I'm very excited for you. It is never easy to run for election, and I have no doubt, and by the way, you did so very well, clearly. And I have no doubt that you will not only represent well the 619 residents who put their trust in you, but the 925 who showed up to the polls, and the over 10,000 that you now represent. So, welcome and congratulations.
I'd also like to congratulate Gavin. Like I said, I knew Gavin when he was a knee-high-to-a-grass hopper. He grew up across the street from us. And he's turned into a fine young man, and I'm so happy that you're with us. And I know you have the Town's best interests at heart, and I know you're gonna do great things. Ms. Mooney? I was unaware that, I've always thought you had to have a window in for safety reasons, for emergency egress. So that'd be interesting if they truly don't have windows in there. I'd like to look into it. If you leave me your contact information or whatever, I'll get back to you and then explain what maybe, why that is, if it is legal, or if it's not, what, you know, we might be able to do. Okay?
I'd like to also welcome Commissioner Hanley to the Board. We are still looking for one more member of our group. So anybody out there that's listening that is a Town Resident and a voting age, take a look at it. It is a time commitment, but I think it's worth the effort that we've all put in. And you don't have to put in the effort of running, as Gavin did, so. With that, I think we're done. There you go.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in attendance in support of the swearing-in ceremony, as well as the Municipal Citizens' graduation. I would also like to thank everyone who supported me and put their trust in me to serve as a representative on the Board. This is a great honor, and I am very eager to begin serving the citizens of Bel Air. I look forward to working with my colleagues on the Board, as well as the professional staff. So, thank you very much.
All right. Now, I've heard a rumor that there's cake when we're finished, so is there, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.